Hi young Dems, Sam Fulham Vice President here with Shane Koubal our President. And we are interviewing Michael Waskovich who is running for PA's 47th district. Hi.
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 How's it doing?
Evening.
How are you?
Could be better, have a little bit of a head cold so bear with me if I start coughing.
Okay.
So we'll just dive right in here with our standard question here is what does being a Democrat mean to you?
Well, to answer that question, I really gotta go back and discuss that I was never, I wasn't always a Democrat. I started off as a Republican, I grew up in a heavy Republican area. And all my friends are still Republicans or diehards and I'm like, okay, whatever guys. Now, my time of being a Republican, I would sit there and argue with them about, you know, a woman's right to choose. You know, universal healthcare even, and this is back in the, you know, early 2000s. And, you know, we discussed things like college and making things more affordable. And finally, one day, they were all looking at me going, "You're not a Republican, you're a Democrat." So when I, when I think about what it's like being a Democrat, it's someone who is, you know, looking at the underdog, looking at the, I guess, the middle class, the working guy, the, or woman, the working persons, excuse me. The, you know, poor people, things like that, that, you know, that need our help. And, you know, not just someone that's gonna not care about them. So that's, to me, that's what's, you know, being a Democrat is all about, is someone who cares about individuals and cares about people over profits, people over corporations, just cares about people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I totally agree, I feel like that's exactly how I answered the question too.
Yeah.
So tell us a little bit about yourself and your personal life.
All right, a little bit about myself, grew up in West Brom, Pennsylvania, a town called Dubois. Last of eight children, so my parents had a large family.
I'm the baby.
I'm the baby. My mother's still, when people, you know, "Who's this?", "Oh, this is Michael, this is the baby." So I will always be the baby even at 34 years old. Let's see. What else about me? Went to private school education after high school. Was able to do that through the Catholic Church. My dad was the parish organist for 34 years. And they paid for all of us kids to go to private school because they, you know, felt that that was the best education you could get. And otherwise, I mean, my parents couldn't afford it. As I am trying to get more comfortable in talking about it, you know, I did not come from a wealthy family. I, you know, my parents, my dad was the sole provider for the, for the family. And my mother was a stay-at-home mom. And, you know, we struggled and there was a time in my life when we faced homelessness and it was very difficult even to come to terms with at, you know, 30-plus years old. You know, something that I couldn't even bring myself to tell Glenn about that, you know, that small chapter of my life. You know, it's something difficult, it's something embarrassing and people don't, you know, necessarily talk about it. So, you know, I faced that, but we overcame that. Ended up, you know, bouncing back. A lot of people don't, a lot of people can't, and they face on and off, on and off. Luckily for my family, it was only one, one time in our lives. Some other things, I went to college in Edinburgh. Was up there for three and a half years before meeting Glenn. And then he was in Lancaster, so he ended up bringing me to Lancaster. We were there for, we were living in Lancaster for a little while, and then we moved to York because of both of our jobs. And now he's working in Lancaster and I'm still in the York area, you know. He's just like, you know, "Should've stayed in Lancaster." I was like, "Well, should've, could've, would've." But yeah, two dogs, two German Shepherds.
Yeah, I was gonna say, talk about Glenn and your dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'm sure we'll talk about Glenn and his dogs. Princess and Apollo, two German Shepherds, pains in the butts, but we love them to death, worry about them.
They're very cute.
Thank you.
Yes. You did a good job.
They, they take after me in my good books. But yeah, so have those two, worry to death about them all the time, any little...
They are children.
Exactly, they get a little scrape, they get a little bump or something at work, call them the vet. Like Princess had a cyst on her and called the vet and we were all panicking. And Glenn's like, "What if it's this, what if it's that?" We're going through every scenario what it could be and we're like, "Oh God, these are our children." Been with Glenn now, oh my God, since 2006, so what's that, 11 years?
Wow, yeah.
Yeah. Been married since, for four years now? I always get it wrong, I always forget, because we've been together for so long that it's almost like we've been married the entire time.
Yeah, yeah.
I know the feeling.
So yeah, when you're, when you're with someone for a very long time, it's just like, "When did, when did this, when did that?", you know?
Yeah.
It's hard to start pinpointing all those milestones.
Yeah.
But yeah, so about, I think about four years now.
So what made you decide to pursue a degree in political science?
Well, originally, I was going for, gonna be a history major. Loved history, wanted to be a history major. However, I didn't think there was gonna be much of a career in, in a history major. So I kinda wanted to maybe do law and was thinking about, about that because I, you know, I do love law. I love talking about, you know, law and government and stuff like that. And then I was like, "I don't know if I wanna, you know, dedicate, you know, more time to law school." So I settled on a political science, political science major. And I figured that's, you know, kind of a balance of where I wanna be. Now with my major, I'm also a minor in international relations. I'm an international relations type of person. I love dealing how, with how countries interact with each other, how people interact with each other. And it just, to me, it's just so fascinating that, you know, in the United States, we have this belief that, that Americans, you know, we know it all, we know how to interact with everything.
Yeah.
But when you actually look at it, we don't.
Not at all.
No, and we'll look at the Middle East, it's, you know, chaos. But we don't understand how it works and that's why I find so fascinating. It's like, how do we make everyone come to the table? And it's almost next to impossible because everybody wants something different. To me, it's just so fascinating.
Yeah.
And that goes right along with political science, dealing with your laws, dealing with your governments, stuff like that. So that's really what brought me to pursue the political science degree.
Yeah, and I feel like understanding that stuff is an easier way to come to a solution with, you know, international problems sort of, understanding how other cultures and how, you know...
Because with political science, you deal with your theories, your political theories, stuff like that. So, you know, not every country has a democracy and not every country a democracy will work for them. Some, you know, work with authoritarian regimes, some work with, you know, monarchs. We have to figure out how do we work with the monarchs, how do we work with authoritarians? How do we work with, you know, parliaments and, and things like that? So that's really something that, you know, I find fascinating and it's just like, I could learn that for the rest of my life.
Gives me a hold of knowledge.
Exactly.
Gives you a rush, you know what I mean? When you find what you're passionate about, it just gives you that, it's hard to put in words.
That feeling.
It's that feeling.
And it's funny because I'll look for like podcasts and stuff like that, it's like, "What's this?", and I'm like, "I'm gonna learn something today." And I'm listening to a podcast, I'm like, "Okay, great."
I don't listen to music so much lately, when I go on a run, I listen to podcasts.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I've tried that at the gym, listening to a podcast, and I'm just like, and next thing I know, I'm moving real slow and I'm like...
It gets you going sometimes.
With the podcast, I wanna sit and just listen.
Yeah.
A lot of that's I'm driving in the car, driving to work, driving to class, stuff like that. So it's just, that's when I, I wanna just sit back and relax and just enjoy it. Whereas when I'm at the gym, it's like, "I gotta listen to music." It has to be like something to get boom, 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 just get me moving, I'm like, "I gotta go."
Yeah. So currently, you sit on the Hellen Borough Council.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about what that entails.
Well, it's a seven-person council with the mayor. Mayor does the tiebreaker if there's ever, you know, a need for that. What I normally do, we have our meetings, we discuss things like trash pickup, taxes. Currently, right now, we have a, an entity in the borough that wants to ask for a tax increase. We don't want to do that because it's, we wanna try to lower taxes, otherwise we're gonna price people out of the borough. And we don't want that. With that, we deal with, you know, all ranges of issues, police, fire, trash, I'm trying to think of everything we do.
Parks.
Parks and rec, yeah, that's one.
My favorite part.
It is.
Yeah, so we deal with all that. I sit on and chair the, it's called the First Night Hellen. If you've ever been, it's our New Year's Eve celebration where, you know, we either raise the shoe or we drop the shoe, depending on what we feel like doing that year, it keeps people guessing. We look for, you know, entertainment, you know, not a lot of people want to go out on New Year's Eve and drink or hit the clubs because, you know, some people are stupid and they will drink and drive and risk of getting in an accident, they just don't, you know, think it's there. So they like to, you know, come and just walk right to the street. And, you know, there's a lot of people there. It benefits one of the local organization, one of the homeless shelters, Bell Association, that, you know, tries to get these people back, you know, back into a home, back into an apartment, some kind of roof over their head that's stable. So it goes to a good cause what we do. And that takes up quite a bit of time because like right now, I'm looking for face painters. Any face painters out there who can do face painting, I'm looking for you?
Shoot us an email.
There you go. Looking for any entertainment, you know, if you have a band that doesn't have anything to do and wanna come out and play, come on out and play, we can, you know, use everything and it's just, you know, because every year, it's something, we wanna keep it something different, we don't want the same repetitive thing, otherwise it just gets boring. So yeah, that's what I normally do on council and, you know, we bicker back and forth. I mean, you've been there when some people are, they don't, they vote no on something just to vote no on it and there's no definitive reason why. I had an ordinance try to come up, LGBT inclusive ordinance that, you know, would kinda just make the Hellen Borough a safe space, something that people can, you know, if you're LGBT, you can move there and you're gonna feel safe. It didn't go over as planned, how I thought it was gonna go. I didn't have, I, personally, I, it was my fault, I did it too soon. There's three, four people coming up who hopefully will be elected in November, Sam. And hopefully, we can reintroduce it and hopefully, we can, we can do something and, you know, make it better. So, you know, right there, I will take full responsibility, that was, you know, my fault. I was really gone how I really wanted to get it done. And I didn't realize how many people were on council that didn't wanna see it happen, didn't want it. And I was just like shocked and I was like, "Wow, we're in 2017 and, you know, this is what we're dealing with." So for almost a year, we were dealing with this ordinance going back and forth at various times, so...
I don't think that's your fault.
Yeah, me neither.
You just wanna just, you just wanna have hope for the world that maybe we were to that point that...
And to offer, yeah, and to offer a minority just protection, it's not, you know what I mean? It's really just protection.
Right, right.
You know what I mean, it's not, I don't know what the point is.
It should, it should be an unsaid thing now, but it's not nowadays, so...
You would think that if, you know, I owned a home that I wanted to rent it out, that I'm not going to care if someone's gay or lesbian or transgender. But there are people out there that will not rent to these people or will not even sell their home to these, you know, people of this demographic. And it's just like, we need something to be like, "No, you can't do that."
Yeah.
And right now, in the State House, there is a bill out there and it's been lingering and lingering and lingering. And there's probably no hope in sight of that thing ever coming out. So we'll see, maybe things will change.
Yeah.
I believe. So what do you love about the 47th district?
Well, there's a lot to, there's a lot to love about the 47th district, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot there. You have Wrightsville, so it's right along the river.
Along the river.
Yeah.
A lot of walks at the river.
Yeah, but, no, yeah, no, Glenn and I will do that every now and then, we'll go down to the river and, you know, take a walk.
Be a little lost for a while.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see here, you know, there's a lot of people there. And when I, we first moved there, I honestly believe that the people there in the 47th, in that area, they just wanna be left alone, they just didn't want anything, "Just leave me alone" and whatever. And the more you go out there and the more you start talking to people, the more you start interacting with them, the more you start realizing that they're actually thriving for that, that, that human connection that...
They wanna be involved.
They wanna be involved, thank you.
Just starts with a hand, you know, just waving at somebody, saying hello.
Right, and there's just an untapped potential there, that's what I love about that. It's like, you can knock on a door and start talking to people. I was out, I don't know, about a month ago maybe with Glenn canvassing and we ran into these neighbors. And you might have seen the house, they really go all out for Halloween. It's, I can't think what street it's on, but I guess she used to sit on council and we sat probably 45 minutes to an hour talking to these people. And I tell them, I tell them every year, I have to drive by their house because I love their house. They're like, "Oh, you should knock, knock on the door, you should've said something sooner." And I didn't realize that, you know, people in this area knock on their door and, you know, they'll talk to you.
Yeah.
They'll lend you a hairdryer.
Don't really need one.
Personal story.
But yeah, so yeah, you have that in the 47th. I mean, there's just, there's so much to do, there's so much to see. And we're not advertising enough of it, we have a lot in the district. But, you know, there's a lot of people that go, "Oh, I already passed through that area to go to Lancaster."
Yeah.
Or "I already passed through that area when I'm going from Lancaster to the city." Okay, well, what can we do to, you know, to show you that there's a lot to do here, you know? I have a neighbor, you might have met her, Robin?
Yeah.
She likes to go kayaking and tubing on the Sesquahana. And she'll hit me up and go, "You and Glenn, you and Glenn need to go." And I'm like, "I can't swim, so I don't know if I wanna do that." You know, and, but she loves going down to the, to the river and, you know, kayaking and tubing. And we have that, but not a lot of people know we have that.
Yeah.
And we really need to be like, "We have this, we have nature." Nature is all around us in, in the 47th. I mean, when I drive to class, trees and, and nature everywhere, but we don't tap into that. You know, one thing that I've noticed a lot of driving around the 47th, the cyclists. And nobody is putting in bike lanes. Nobody's putting in responsible bike lanes to say, "Hey, let's bring this in." You know, that could be something that, you know, the 47th could, you know, bike lanes everywhere. And really, you know, push that up and give something, you know, one more thing for people to love about the area.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so previously, you have stated your stance on legalizing marijuana. What do you think that that would bring to Pennsylvania based on the Colorado model?
I've changed my mind, I'm totally against it, no, just kidding, just kidding.
It hurts.
When I look at what Pennsylvania can do if they legalize recreational marijuana, and I talk to a lot of people and these people will tell me, "If you do that, crime's gonna go up and this is gonna happen and this is gonna happen." It's all this gloom and doom and I'm, I try to tell people that it's not gonna be gloom and doom. We, you know, you want property taxes to, to come down. I'm sure, you own, right?
Actually, we rent here.
Okay, um, sorry, I thought, yeah, but anyway. You know, if you own, owned, you know, you're looking at probably a 3,500 to 4,000, maybe even more yearly tax bill. That's a lot of money when you're buying a house.
Yeah.
And when you're putting this all in. So if we legalize recreational marijuana, you know, Eugene DePascuale, you said that we could on the conservative side, bring in what, $250 million in taxable revenue?
That sounds nice.
It's, it, it sounds great for the stuff that we could do. We could reduce your property tax. When a politician stands up and says, "I'm gonna eliminate property tax," that's one person you should, I'm not, don't vote for that person because they're lying, they're right away lying. I'm going to tell you right now, I wanna reduce your property tax. Will we get down to zero? I don't know. Could recreational marijuana break, excuse me, bring us down to zero? It very well could, I hope it does. When we look at that, we look at job growth. If you think about smoke shops, edible, you know, marijuana, you know, or, is that edible marijuana?
Yeah.
Is that what we call it?
Yeah.
I don't, I've never partake, partaken in it, but you know what, I'm all for adults being adults and if you wanna do it, you know, maybe we should let you, you know, we can trust you.
And make some money off of it for ours, you know?
Correct, correct. Now, you know, when we look at this, it could be job growth. You're gonna have people in rural areas, in the cities, and all over the place, starting pot shops, starting the bakeries, having the edibles. And with all that, these people are gonna need to purchase supplies from, you know, your container. They're gonna need to purchase supplies from, you know, your farms, your, your grocery stores. All this stuff that's going to create jobs, will they be, you know, $25 an hour jobs? Probably not. Could they be $15 an hour jobs? Probably. And we could really invest in this and this be a stepping stone for Pennsylvania. I mean, we'd be the first state in the Northeast to legalize recreational marijuana. People from Ohio, from Delaware, from Virginia, West Virginia, they will all come up here. They will come to our state parks, they will shop at our malls, they will eat at our restaurants, they will go over to Friendly's and say, "Give me a burger." And you know what, that keeps people, that, that keeps your, your service staff employed, that keeps the management employed, that, you know, brings in revenue for the state that, you know, we tax on. So not only are we taxing on recreational marijuana, but we'll be taxing on, you know, payroll, we'll be taxing on people spending for to buy clothes, to go shopping at Bath and Body Works, you know? Things like that, you know, like, "How are you?"
You have little plugs in there.
You know, those little plugs in there? But, but yeah, so with this, we could actually expand it onto something great. And we just have to do it. And people, you know, if you want your property tax to come down, sometimes you're gonna have to do the hard things in life. You're gonna have to do the things you don't approve of. There are people that don't approve of alcohol and alcohol sales. Okay, well, if I wanna be a responsible adult and have a beer, I can have that. But if you ask me, I think alcohol is probably more dangerous than smoking weed.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure there's individuals that could say, "Yes, it is, 100%." But it's just, it's an untapped potential and it's an untapped resource and we're just afraid to do it. And when I talk to people, they'll say things like, "Well, I want, you know, let's wait 10 years."
Why?
Yeah, so we can be one of the last.
Yes, yes, so New York can do it, New Jersey can do it, Ohio can do it. And then we're gonna say, "Oh, let's, now let's tap into this because we're seeing all this, all this, this revenue coming in."
You'll miss the burst.
Yeah, we'll miss out.
You'll miss the burst.
Exactly, just...
I mean, it'll always be there as revenue, but it won't be as...
Correct, correct, just like...
But impact won't be as great.
Just like we're going to miss out on the severance tax. We've missed out on so much money for taxing the Marcellus Shale. We, we missed out on that, we missed out on that opportunity and now Governor Wolf is saying, "We need to have this severance tax." We're not gonna, you know, get as much as, you know, we could've had we done it the right way. So let's do recreational marijuana the right way, let's legalize it, let's tax it, let's move forward and create jobs by it.
Let's be trailblazers.
For once, for once, let's be trailblazers and see what happens. And you know what? At one point in our civilization, we outlawed alcohol. We said it was illegal and there were, you know, speakeasies and people did it illegally, whatever. And you know what, if we pass it and it blows up in our face, guess what we can do? Hey, we made a mistake, we're gonna, we're gonna reverse that law. You can do that, that's the greatest thing about government, you can reverse a law. Yeah, that's how I feel about recreational marijuana. And even if it's recreational, I probably still wouldn't smoke it. I mean, I, I used to smoke a cigar every now and then and I haven't probably touched one in probably four years.
Well, that's okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm just like, you know what, you're an adult, you can do it, do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So besides that, how would you legislate differently than Representative Gillespie, who's currently the Republican incumbent?
Well, it's an easy answer. I would legislate.
You would legislate.
That's what I would do and I would look at the bill before me and say, "How will this impact the people of the 47th? How will this impact the people of Pennsylvania?" Because yes, I would be representing the 47th district, but I'd also be making legislation that would affect the entire state. So, you know, and right now, I, there's always rumors going around, so whatever. But I've heard rumors that some of these Republicans in this area will vote only because the Republicans tell them, "This is how you're gonna vote, this is how party leadership wants you to vote. You can't be like that." It doesn't work because you're not listening to your constituents, you're not listening to your people. You're not going out there saying, "Hey, Sam, what do you want?"
Yeah, that's what you're there for.
"Hey Shane, what do you want?" You know, you're not there asking these people. And, you know, I'm not gonna be one that's gonna hide either. I'm not gonna be, you know, like the wind, I'm not gonna just suddenly appear, then be gone again. You know I'm there and I'm gone. But, you know, I wanna go to, you know, the schools, your elementary schools, your high schools and talk to the students. With that, you'd be also talking to teachers. You'd be saying, "What is wrong with our education system? What, what do you see?" I mean, kids know probably just as much as adults do.
More, yeah.
Yeah, today. So they're going to tell you what they wanna see, gives you ideas, you know, opens that up. I'll hold town halls, what is the harm in, you know, once every so many months, holding a town hall? It doesn't have to be every week. You could go out and say, "Hey, you know, Hellen Township, Hellen Borough, I'm having a town hall. You know, I'm gonna put it in, you know, I'm gonna have it in the township building or the fire hall." And have a town hall and have people, you know, then come to me. I wanna be able to, at least once a month, open my office door in the district and say, "I'm here. I'm gonna sit in this chair for eight hours, I don't know. You have a problem, I want you to come, you know, you can come see me. If you can't come see me, let's arrange an appointment, I'll come to you." We need legislators that are going to go to the people or be available for the people. Right now, we don't have that.
Yep.
So it's, yeah, it's tragic really.
So if elected, what would you like to accomplish while in office?
Oh, there's so much. One, I would like to see Pennsylvania go away from being the top 10 most corrupt states. That's the one thing that, every time I see that report, I just, I shudder and I'm just like, "Why, why are we still in the top 10 most corrupt states?" That's one thing I'd love, I'd love to see, you know, to be accomplished. The other thing, passing, you know, getting recreational marijuana passed. The other thing is the LGBT all-inclusive bill, I'd like to see that passed. I mean, right now, every other state in the Northeast has some kind of protection for the LGBT. We're losing out on people. You know, you gotta sit there and think to yourself, if you're LGBT, do you wanna, you know, move to a state that's not going to help you? That's not going to be there for you? You wanna move somewhere that's going to be there for you. So I want that to get passed. So that's some things that, you know, we have to look at and we really have to be like, we gotta get it done. We, we can't, you know, lulligan, it needs to be done yesterday.
So what are your thoughts on someday moving to a single payer healthcare system?
I'm all for it, I'm 100% for single payer. I mean, I think that's where we are going as a society. And eventually, that's where we will hit. It's just the matter of, are we going to do, to do the hard thing and do it? Or are we going to keep arguing about it, saying, "It doesn't work, it doesn't work, it doesn't work." Where we're kind of already under a single payer. If I don't have health insurance and I'm sick, I could go to the emergency room. I don't have to pay that bill. And I don't want to. Well, who's gonna pay that bill? You two, through your tax dollars. So why not take that, those tax dollars that we're already gonna use for that and put it to a single payer, put it for that healthcare?
It just makes so much more sense.
Right, and you want your government to be there for you, not for corporations. You want them to be there for you. And you want your tax dollars to go for you, for things that you use. You use roads, you use sidewalks, you use the snowplows when, and if we get snow down here in York. I need snow. But, you know, you use all those things, you use police, you use fire, you know, you use EMS. You want your tax dollars to go for the things you use. And you wanna see your tax dollars, you know, working for you. Right now, with the healthcare the way it is, and it's, I don't even know where it's at anymore, we really need to focus on that, we really need to be saying, "This is your tax dollars, we need them to work for you." So that's why I really think single payer healthcare is on the horizon. We just gotta get up off our, off our butts and head there.
I agree.
We're doing, trying, building a coalition, one day at a time.
We'll get there, eventually.
Yeah, get there.
So we have a fluff question as last question. Who's somebody that inspires you?
Well, you know, I've had this question asked for me before and thought about it and the person that really does inspire me would be my dad. He passed away, it's a couple of years ago. Person that really does inspire me, um would be my dad, um he passed away, it's a couple of years ago, maybe, I think, four years now. It was six years, it's been six years. Um but when I look back on it, you know, before I would always answer the question like, oh, the person who inspires me is yeah, um Abraham Lincoln because, you know, he was a good president. I would look to political leaders and I'm thinking, I never knew these people, I only know what I read, read and at one point in my life, I was like Ronald Reagan. And then I read about him and I was like, ugh, no, so.
Never mind.
Did you watch the CNN documentary on the Reagan Show?
No, I didn't, but. I think it's a.
Well, it wasn't that great, it wasn't that great a show.
I'll have to give it, maybe I'll give it a shot.
Kind of cringe, cringe for me.
But yeah, I, I would definitely say my dad, um he, like I said, was, you know, uh looking back on it, he busted his butt. Never took care of himself, which led to the end result, but um always took care of his family, made sure that, you know, they came first. I don't think I ever saw the man eat dinner, um he would eat pretzels every now and then, but I really never saw him sit down and eat dinner. Uh he was always working, he was always doing something, um but i- i- it just, you know, shows me that what he actually did for his family. And what he was never given the, uh, the appreciation for, we never really appreciated at the time, we were all just like, we were all kids and didn't care and now that he's gone, we're like. Wow, you know, we, he really did a lot for this family, he really worked hard for this family and it's something that's just like, you don't see that very often, a lot of people. In times of, you know, struggle, they just up and leave, they just, they're, they're done, he wasn't like that, you know, like I said before, we were homeless for a while. And he went to work every single day to, you know, make sure we weren't like that anymore, um he went without any time, like, you know, during Christmas. Um took the kids a while to realize it, that, you know, he was never getting anything and we were just being these greedy little shits. That, you know, that we, you know, kids were and it wasn't till later on in our lives that we were like, wow, you know, we really need to, you know, step up and, you know, we. Get him silly stuff and, and now I think of, I, I got him one year for Christmas, it was called um Pizza Pizzazz. And my, my dad used to love making frozen pizzas later on after he retired, but you'd put it on this thing, it would spin and it would heat it up. And he wanted one so bad and it, like, that was like his most cherished possession and he would use it for like.
Aww.
Try finding random things to use it for, that's what he'd be doing, but you know, he would like, that was just the one thing he like absolutely loves and my mom was like. Yeah, he used it probably every single day, every single day and I'm just like, why were us kids, you know, we felt, you know, looking back on it, you can back, oh my god, we were terrible. But it's just like, he just worked his butt off to make sure that we had everything that we needed, so he's one person.
That's a good dad, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for, thanks for coming today.
Yeah, thanks for coming by, this is the beginning of getting to know your ca, democratic candidates for the midterm elections, so subscribe to our YouTube cha, YouTube channel to keep following along.
And remember to vote for Mike Moskovich.